Today is Tuesday, January 26, 2016. I call this meeting to order. Where the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Zarnik.
Here.
Trustee Feigtur.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Petri.
Here.
Trustee Prochnow.
Here.
All board members are present this evening, and we now move on to the invocation and pledge allegiance. We have tonight Pastor Hanson from the Elk Grove Baptist Church doing the invocation. If everyone could please rise.
Let's pray together. Our gracious, loving heavenly Father, we come to you this evening and we recognize that you are the one that has made us, that gives us the breath and the life that we have and all the good things that we enjoy. And we thank you for being a good and a gracious God. We know that all is not well in our world, and so we pray for those areas where there are conflicts. We pray for our servicemen and women who are there. We ask that you would keep them safe. We pray that you would give them success in accomplishing their missions. We thank you, Lord, for the release of prisoners recently, and we pray for the safety and return of those who are still held. We pray for our country, especially those on the east coast digging out from a major blizzard, and ask that you would comfort those who have lost loved ones in this storm. We thank you for our own community, Lord. We pray that you would help those of us who are in this room to lead with lives of integrity, service, and goodwill towards all of our neighbors. We pray that you would help us to honor you in all of our words and our actions, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. The flags to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Pastor, hang on a second. First off, I do apologize running a little bit late, so make up as usual now with our heart-healthy, dark-chocolate cancer-fighting logos.
Thank you.
And I know this Saturday, we have very special events going on with the Character Coalition. Did you want to talk a little bit about it?
I'll just remind you and invite all of you, the Community Character Coalition of Elk Grove has a new annual event starting this year, the Carnival of Exceptional Character. And what we've done is we've invited organizations in Elk Grove that do community service, that serve the community in some way, to all come and be present and have a little game as a carnival thing, but also to give information about what they do. And the kids will have fun playing the games and getting prizes, and hopefully some of the adults will find some ways to connect and get involved and volunteer and serve. So it's Saturday evening at the pavilion from 5:30 to 7:30.
And free food, free games, and prizes.
You got it.
So you can't, on Saturday night, what a better way to spend the family together.
And we moved it from September to January. There's no football games. It used to be on a Friday night, and none of that to contend with, and a great evening to be indoors and have fun.
And what's nice, too, is it actually gives everyone a chance to have, see what's available.
Right.
To be really well-rounded. I mean, a lot of people donate a lot of time to this community, but a lot of people don't realize what is out there available for them. It's amazing. People come and say, "Oh, I didn't know you had this kind of civic group or that group." Well, yeah, but you guys are taking a step to make sure they see it in a fun way.
And I think there's between 35 and 40 that are coming.
Wow.
So.
It's gonna be great.
Yep.
And, you know, when you talk about exceptional characters, well, I know there's a cast of characters right now, but, you know, we won't go through them, but we do wish you well.
Anyway, I'll leave some of these with you.
Appreciate it. We'll get them out.
We'll see some of you Saturday.
We'll have a good time.
All right.
Pastor, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And speaking of probably the biggest character we know, he's not here tonight, so we have Mr. Payne filling in for him, and we want to welcome Bill, filling in for my Ed McMahon, Georgie, who's not around tonight, so I'm sure he's having fun somewhere in warm weather. Let's see. With that, we then move on to the approval of the minutes of January 12, 2016.
I approve the minutes, and the Spencer to read.
Second. We're motion by Trustee Petri, second by Trustee Zarnik. Judy, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Feigtur.
Yes.
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Trustee Listner.
Aye.
Trustee Petri.
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow.
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik.
Aye.
Motion passes six to nothing. So, Mr. Payne, how are we doing so far?
You're doing wonderfully.
See, see what it is when you have real good, high-level attorneys. They're very observant, they pick up...
Right on schedule.
Yeah, cannot thank you enough.
I don't know what to compare it to.
Yeah, exactly, Jim. So, okay, we move on now to mayors and trustees report a few items. Back on January 14th, we had Cub Scout Troop 190, I apologize, visit the village hall. We got a chance to meet the Cub Scouts and go through, they were studying government. Had a chance to talk to them about different governments. On January 21st and 25th, I had tollway board meetings. One was the customer service planning meeting, the second was the full board meeting. And I'll tell you something that, you know, and everyone knows with me being involved with the tollway, how I've been saying how impressed I am with the tollway as far as what they do and what they achieve. We had a presentation today, which I think people, or yesterday, I apologize, that people find impressive, especially now with the presidential election going on. Everyone's talking about infrastructure reinvestment, upgrading the infrastructure, taking care of things. Well, in the country, nationwide, there are 600 and 10,000, 749 bridges, okay, in our country. Of those bridges, 24% are deemed to be structurally deficient or functionally obsolete. That's about 145,000 bridges. The Illinois tollway has 637 bridges in its system. How many do you think are considered structurally deficient or functionally obsolete? Nationally, it's 24%. How many do you think the tollway has?
Zero.
You win.
Bingo.
Now, one bridge in the tollway system, and they get checked, and they're regulated, has that. Next line.
So they got the best bridge.
Pavement, pavement, condition. In the country, you know, they rate pavement either as poor, very poor, which is the bad mark, fair, better, good, very good, or excellent. The tollway in Illinois, what, well, on average in the country, roughly 14%, try to read my numbers, 14% are considered in poor or very poor condition, in the country, on average. What percentage do you think tollway is considered either poor or very poor? What?
Zero.
You got it. Now, one mile, now, one, well, one mile of tollway is considered poor or very poor. And they don't just do visual inspections, they actually do core sample inspections. 86% of the tollway roadway is considered good, very good, or excellent. 14% is considered fair or transitional. The next closest major interstate state, Oregon, has 57% excellent or very good, 39% fair or above average, and 4% poor or very poor. We are the only one that's 100%. So, you know, I tell people all the time, what I like about tollways, tollways run almost like a business, not like government. And like in business, I'm a business owner, a lot of us are big, Trustee Prochnow's a business owner, a lot of us worked in business and all that. In business, if you don't deliver a right product for the right price, what happens? You go out of business. The tollway's the same thing. They charge tolls, but if they charge too much, people are gonna find other ways to get around. If they don't charge enough, we can't pay our bills. Tollway does not collect any tax dollars. We're a user fee system. You pay tolls if you use it, if you don't use it, you don't pay anything for it. And it makes me proud when I see how well of a product they're delivering, especially compared to what we've gone through with winters and all that. It's a very successful program. So I was really, to be honest with you, I was shocked when I saw these numbers today, too. So, they do a good job, so as you ride on there, you may not enjoy having to pay a toll, but at least know you're getting the best roads and bridges in the country as you do it. So, I thought that was very interesting. So, with that said, a couple of other items. I also today had a meeting with the DuPage County Board, talking about SOX's new program with JDA, working on fly-quiet rotation program with aircraft. If you read the papers today, the Sun-Times and the Herald, they talk about the ONCC presenting rotation options for flight paths at nighttime to try to spread out the flight impact on communities. Just so you know, nothing's gonna be decided, at least till May. They're gonna allow JDA to go ahead and do what we call actual modeling, and that's when we actually take data and see what the real impact, instead of having someone sit in a room and just draw a line saying, "Well, if they go on this line, that looks like it should be good, let's try it." We're gonna actually have it tested, modeled, and verified before we recommend a flight path. And to Chicago's credit, they're gonna provide us all the data we've long needed to do an accurate and complete job. So we're very happy with that, we're very thankful for Chicago partnering with us, and, you know, that's important, that we work together to find a way to minimize the impact on all of us. The one thing we are a little worried about is if you read the article, which is true, they're looking to expand the time of flights a little earlier in the morning, a little later at night. That we're gonna have to work with them on and keep an eye on, so they don't go too far on that. If anyone remembered last board meeting, we were a little disappointed with ComEd with the electric supply for our Saw Creek, our Bussy Dam along the Saw Creek. It's ready to go, but we have one last transmitter down by Golf Road that needs power to energize it, to work for the system all the way down. To ComEd's credit, they contacted me the next day. They are working very quickly and very hard to get this done. They apologize for any miscommunications that may have occurred. They want to make sure it's up and operational before the potential spring, potential flooding, and they have promised us that it will be done before the end of March, if not sooner. So, we're very happy to see that. I can't thank Cynthia Thomas from ComEd enough for her quick response, her staff, her engineers, and hopefully we get this all resolved and up and operational long before we get the thaw and potential flood that we've had in the past in the spring. So that's moved along well. Next item I'd like to talk about, just briefly, is I know there's been a series of articles in one of our local papers about red light cameras. I think what brought this all on was recently, if anyone saw, Elgonquin decided to take a camera out because it saw a big decrease in tickets. And I think it's great. They should try to see if drivers' habits have been changed. If they've been changed, they may not be needed anymore, we agree. If people remember, or may not, in 2011, we took out cameras at our intersection of Bussy and Devon. We put the cameras in in 2009, it was our number, I mean, 2008, it was the number-two accident intersection in the village. Put the cameras in, by 2011, it dropped out of the top 10, I think it was as low as number 18. So we decided as a board, let's take the cameras out, take the signs down, and let's see if people have learned to follow the rules, drive safely at the intersection. Within seven months, it went to number-one accident intersection in the village. Number one. So without those cameras, people went back to the bad driving habits, accidents recurring, the village put them back in. So I talked to the reporter from the Herald about that, and I said, "I think it's great. If another town has had more success, I want to hear about it, what maybe they did differently than we did, that they could remove the cameras." Because this board's always said, "If they're not necessary, they wouldn't be in." But we did the test, it was all certified with IDOT, the Illinois Department of Transportation, and we can't take that chance. What I found ironic about the articles in the Herald is they really went down to one item where they said number of crashes with injuries. But if you look at the numbers here, they omit that the total number of crashes, that means the total number of accidents that occurred in intersections before red light cameras compared to after. So what happened after they put in cameras, the accidents decreased by 86%. The hazardous crashes, which obviously are much worse ones, decreased by 77%. So the Herald admits that crashes are down dramatically when you put the cameras in. And I told the board earlier, I said, "If I went down to Springfield tomorrow, and I told Governor Rauter, Michael Madigan, and Cullerton, the Senate President, that I can reduce accidents in Illinois by 86% if everybody wore a purple hat when they drove, by the next day, there'd be a law requiring everyone to wear purple hats to drive." Because think about it, 86% reduction in accidents, that's huge. That's unfathomable. And that's why I can't figure out where the Herald's going for. I would think they'd be complimenting and thanking new technology to reduce accidents by that much. But they keep looking for ways to, I don't know, undermine red light cameras, and their own numbers show that they work. Follow the law, drive safely, you have no problem. If you don't, you should be in trouble, because you're creating a hazardous situation for innocent people. And, you know, I feel bad for, you know, the ones that had accidents when we took ours down for seven months. They have that many accidents that occur without them. So that's why we're back up, and our accidents are back down where they should be there, and it's not in the top 10 anymore, like it was when we had them before. So, I just can't figure out the philosophy here, but that's newspapers for you. Right, Mr. Payne? I don't put you on, that's fine. No comment, I understand. Okay, we got a couple of swearing-ins tonight before we get moving on, so Chief Michael, if you want to join me?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. And trustees, thank you as well from the Fire Department. We've got two new hires here that are gonna be starting their employment with the Fire Department this evening. Actually, they started with us yesterday. We're very happy to have them on board with these two new hires that we've put in place. It brings us up to our full authorized staffing level for the department, so we appreciate your support for that. We appreciate the support from the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners for getting us excellent candidates into the mix here and bringing them forward for employment. So thank you for all the support you've given us on that. Our first firefighter this evening is Clark Jensen. Clark, if you would come up, please. Clark was born and raised in Wheeling, Illinois, and he continues to live there now. He attended Wheeling High School, where he participated in football, diving, and water polo. No wrestling.
Wait, wait, what sports?
Football, diving, and water polo.
Well, there's one with a W, but it wasn't the right...
I told you, bud.
Water, wrestling, well, close enough.
Close enough.
Well, you're kinda wrestling your water polo.
Absolutely.
A lot of grappling under there, so, okay.
After high school, Clark had a goal of becoming a firefighter, and he went through the fire science program at Harper College where he attained an associate's degree. While he was in Harper College, going through the program there, he became certified as an EMT, an emergency medical technician through the state. After he received his associate's degree from Harper College, Clark went on to paramedic school at Northwest Community Hospital. Since he graduated paramedic school, he's been working as an emergency room technician at Lutheran General Hospital until he was hired on by us here today. We're very happy to have Clark here with us, we're very happy to have the experience and the education that he's bringing forward, coming forward with a college education in fire science is a tremendous start in this career. The experience he's gained as an emergency medical technician, paramedic, and an emergency room technician will be very valuable for our skills and the ambulance as well. So we're very happy to have Clark here with us this evening.
Okay, so, was Coach Benedetto still at school when you were there?
Yes, sir.
He was still there. He's retired now, but I know he was there for, okay. Wheeling Wildcats, that's why I started my teaching career.
Good.
Long time. You weren't even thought in your parents' eyes yet, so, okay. If you raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Clark Jensen.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Firefighter.
Firefighter.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Firefighter.
Firefighter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Who do you have, first off, who do you have here tonight?
My mother, my father, my girlfriend, and then my sister.
Okay, and you got your father coming down and pin the badge on?
Do.
Okay. Don't worry, if you stick him a little bit, he can stop the bleeding. He's a paramedic, so he's good. Take your time, you're fine. Congratulations. That's a good job. Give him a hand on that. Come on, here, here, here. Why don't you talk a little bit about yourself and...
All right. Well, I'm Clark. Chief Michael pretty much explained me, but I'd like to thank my family and my friends for supporting me and encouraging me. I'd also like to thank the Village of Elk Grove for providing me with this excellent opportunity. Very happy to be here. I'd also like to thank Elk Grove Village Fire Department. Happy to work with you, and thank you for accepting us to the department. Thank you.
Nice job. Hang on. For your family. There'll be some chocolate logos here to hand out to relatives, everyone being here.
Thank you, sir.
And you are joining the best department around, no question.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Nice work.
Good job. Just making sure.
Zach Milburn, please come forward. Zach comes to Elk Grove Village from Gray's Lake, Illinois. He attended the College of Lake County, where he earned his associate's degree in fire science, as well as his paramedic license. Prior to coming here to Elk Grove Village, Zach was employed by the Wakanda Fire District, and he also worked in the Newport Township Fire Department as well before coming here. In his free time, Zach enjoys being outdoors, fishing, biking, and traveling, and has a special interest in motorcycles. And I believe when Zach comes up here and talks, he's gonna allude to the fact that he was a wrestler in school. There you go, we've got some good information for you there, Mayor.
We got fire chief material.
Zach Milburn.
What school did you go to?
Warren Township High School.
Warren High School, huh? What weight?
Uh, 140, 145.
Okay, that's good. How'd you do?
Uh, not bad.
We didn't wrestle, I don't think we ever wrestled Warren from Elk Grove when I was coaching. That's good. Well, that's why you're being successful now.
Exactly.
That's what I wanted to hear. Nothing wrong with water polo, it's close, started with a W, so you're close. So, okay, raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Zach Milburn.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Firefighter.
Firefighter.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Firefighter.
Firefighter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Tonight, I've brought my family here, my father, John, my stepmother, Colleen, and my grandparents are here as well. Appreciate you guys being here. And my father's gonna come up here and...
Come on up. See, we're not worried if Russell gets stuck. They just let it bleed, it's not a big deal.
Losing weight?
Yeah, that's right, you know, it cuts weight that way.
I'd like to thank my family for being here, but first and foremost, I'd like to thank the Village of Elk Grove for having me and entrusting me with this position. I'm very excited to be here, and I'm very excited to have a long career here at this department. Thank you.
Good job. Hang on, sir. Give you some stuff here for your family, some chocolates. Never forget that cutting weight and stuff, it's in your body forever.
Thank you.
Nice going, congratulations. Okay, before they go, Deputy Chief, come on down. Come on down. Hobble on down. What happened? Did you work? Hey, honest. I used to work for another government team when I was in high school, and every Monday, you see guys kinda hobbling into work, and they go in the garage, and next thing you hear, "Oh, oh, oh." At least you're honest. Some chocolates for you men back there. Sorry to make you hobble.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, buddy. Guys, thank you for being here tonight, too. And give one to Dion back there, he looks like he's a little malnourished back there. Thank you very much. If you folks want to get going, by all means, now's the time. Thank you again, and welcome to the family. See, never forget. It's that blood, cut a little weight that way. It's in you, it's in you. We'll give him a second to go ahead and go before we go to the trustees' report. Was that fun, Mr. Payne?
That was a lot of fun. Well said. Well done.
He's got, we're gonna have to make some decisions after this meeting. Ms. Trump, I'm sorry, but we're gonna have to make some decisions, we have to. I'm sorry. Okay, move on, trustees' report. Why don't we start tonight with trustee Listner?
Whoa. He didn't even have his book open.
Well, let's see what we got here.
Just for that.
Actually, just a real short thing, Mr. Mayor. Today, I got an email from Consumer Reports, and they've been pushing to get the phone providers to have their customers have software that could block these unwanted robo-calls from telemarketers. And they've made some progress. They got Time Warner to sign on, unfortunately, we don't have Time Warner, but they're working with other companies like AT&amp;T, Uverse, and Comcast, and others, and hopefully they'll make progress. But they mentioned the software they were giving away to their customers for free is a product that the Village, Villager Newsletter of November of 2015 had an article on called "No More Robo," it's a little hard to say, but anyway, it's free software, and you can get it from their site. And if you do have your telephone coming over the internet, such as Comcast or Uverse, it won't work with the old-fashioned landlines, but it actually will block these calls. I've had it running at home for over six months, and all I get is one ring if it's an unwanted call, they have a big database somewhere, and it just blocks them. I mean, I still get the religious calls, the charity calls, I should say, and the political ones, unfortunately, which are gonna start getting pretty hot and heavy, but those you can't block. But anyway, that service is, and if you want to look it up, the paper is still available on the internet, on the village website, if you want to look at the November issue and read about it. It was very nicely done, and it may be helpful to others, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on now to trustee Feigtur.
Yes. First of all, Meet Chicago Northwest, I have a couple of things to tell everybody about that I think might be kind of important. One is that they did get their funding from the state, and what I've talked about in the past has been simply that they were really endangered and worried about the organization closing down, but now they've gotten word from Springfield, they're gonna get about But now they've gotten word from Springfield, they're gonna get about the same funding that they've had in the past, maybe about $5,000 less, but it's really good news for them. And at the same time, they are still cutting back on staff. They've done that. And they are also gonna move to a smaller office area than what they have right now as soon as they can work something out with the people they're running it from in Schaumburg. What's going on right now, a big thrust for the Meet Chicago Northwest, our tourist group, is the third annual Meet Chicago Northwest Restaurant Week. That's coming up, and that's gonna be February 18th to the 28th, February 18th to the 28th. And it's a big thing. They have about 35 restaurants so far that participate in this. Three of them I know for sure are in Elk Grove Village. One of trustee Prochnow's favorite places, Shelby Campbell's, is participating. And then Sweet Baby Ray's and Jimmy's Char House are three of the... out of that 35 that are participating in it. And what they do is they give you a special menu when you go to them, and you get a... It will save you money, and you use the special menu, and it helps the restaurant trying to drum up more business. They tell me this time of the year is the absolute deadest time for restaurants. The hardest for them to get people to come to. And so Chicago is real big in this Restaurant Week, and I think it's a national thing that's done. And it's done during that time because of the, you know, people not coming to restaurants, and they have to try to boost their participation. Another thing that was mentioned earlier tonight, the Carnival Exceptional Character. I got an email today asking trustee Prochnow and myself to ask to invite the board members to come to the event. They're not gonna send out individual invitations as they have in the past, so they asked us if we would invite you to come to the event on Saturday afternoon at 5:30. And so you are invited.
Come, you're invited.
Okay, and one last thing is the Elk Grove Lions Club is having its Annual Trivia Night. This is their 10th annual one. It's gonna be Saturday, February 27th, at the Garden Terrace. And if you're interested in that, Lenora Zumf, one of the leaders of the Lions, she has a telephone number here. You can call her at 847-985-0381. And tell her you're interested, and she'll give you all the details on the trivia night. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Factor. Trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. Just wanted to mention that the applications for the Frank Zarnik scholarships are available at Conant and Elk Grove High School. There are six $1,000 grants for Elk Grove residents. The cutoff date is gonna be April 22nd, so there's plenty of time to apply and for the possibility of assisting you with your college expenses. And talking about the trivia night, uh...
You won that one time, didn't you?
The first time.
The first year they had it?
I think the second time, too.
Did you? Two times?
Yes, yes. Anyway, but...
We won't say if that first time there was any cheating going on, but we won't. Yeah, we won't talk about that.
Yeah, I was a judge.
That was the 50th anniversary one.
That's what I wanted to start to say. It started with the 50th anniversary, now 10 years. We are now gonna be celebrating our 60th, and that's still going on, and that's all part of it. So it's a fun night. It really, really is. And that concludes my report.
I think our former... I mean, our village attorney, Mr. Nigabaka, was the emcee that night.
Yeah.
Remember that? I think him and Frank.
Yes.
Yes.
They had a great time.
That was.
You know, and the other thing, it was funny, is because we did dress up our table. We were pirates of Salt Creek. And everybody could bring food and snacks and so forth, and we didn't bring any because we pillaged, and we just stole everybody else's food. It was a great time.
But I do want to notice, Mr. Payne, that trustee Zarnik's husband was the one reading the questions, and they somehow magically won that night, so we won't go any further than that. I think the team that came in second should've been awarded first, but we won't discuss that. We won't discuss that, but that's okay.
Did you pillage the answers, too?
I didn't say that. I didn't say that.
Okay, we move on now. Trustee Petri.
Yes, we had a... On Monday, the 18th, we had a 60th anniversary meeting. We had the Park District, the library, and as well as the village involved, and they all have events planned jointly for Sunday, September 17th. The initial ones will be right here in the... between the village parking lot and the pavilion parking lot, as well as the library. And things are going very well. We also talked about the September Fest coming up on the 23rd and 24th of September this year, and that plan is moving well along. We had Larry Walter from Tasty Catering to give us some ideas and plans and things that they could do for us. So that part is coming along pretty well. And we have the major concert at the Lions, whatever you wanna call it.
Park LGK?
LGK. And that will also be on Sunday, and that will be a concert followed by fireworks. And that's all I have on that item, but then today, this morning, I hosted 90 second graders from Salt Creek School, and that was a fun time. About a half of them were... English as a second language, so that was interesting, too. And we had... Then we had the fire, Jim Dennehy. Oh, he's gone already, but he was here, as well as Dave Johnson and Eddie Thomas from the police department, and they took 'em around. They got to sit in the fire trucks and got to sit and blow the siren on the squad cars, and they just had a great time. And their biggest question was, and they had a lot of questions. We were there. We had to finally cut 'em off, but they wanted to know how many bodyguards the mayor had. And I said, well, the six of us pretty much take care of it. It was very, very interesting, very, very interesting group. Fun kids, two years.
Did they get to see the Jim Petrie jail cell?
No. We didn't go there.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Okay, and thank you. I appreciate you helping out today on that very much so. Trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
I might wanna add, you need that protection against us, from us, so that's why you have it. I just wanna... Well, I was gonna bring up about our Oktoberfest. We have picked the dates for it, and it's gonna be the 23rd and 24th of September. Even though it is in September, it is our Oktoberfest, and don't want Schaumburg coming back and saying we stole their name, so... We're looking forward to getting it all set up. It's gonna go two nights, Friday and Saturday night. We'll get the hours and everything else set up, but we're moving along and anticipating a fun night, or fun two nights.
Same location as the birthday celebration?
Yes, Park LGK.
Okay, anything further?
That's it.
Thank you. Last, but not least, trustee Prochnow.
Yes, thank you. I just wanna go over some more details about the anniversary picnic that we're having on July 17th. It is a combination. The Park District is also celebrating their 50th anniversary. Elk Grove High School is also celebrating their 50th anniversary this year. But that particular day on Sunday, the 17th, events will be running from noon until 5 o'clock, both at the Park District and in the village square and at the library. The library will be doing an ice cream social. The village will be sponsoring a DJ and some entertainment, and we'll be having a concert at 3:00 PM of the Hat Guys, and they've performed at one of our bike races. Everybody really loved them. And the Park District is doing 50 events to celebrate the 50th. So it's gonna be a full afternoon of activity, followed by the evening concert over at the park. The other thing I wanted to mention is that Sister City Organization met last week to go over travel arrangements with our 16 Elk Grove High School exchange students. They'll be going to Termini, MRS, our Sister City, the last week in March, so a lot of itinerary plans were discussed, and it's gonna come sooner than we expect. It always seems to come up so fast, but the students are very, very excited. And this year, the trip will be chaperoned by the principal of Elk Grove High School and his wife, Paul Kelly. And Mrs. Kelly will be chaperoning, so we're really looking forward to that exchange program. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Prochnow. Two quick things I forgot. I apologize. One, Chief Schmidt, I wanna commend your police department. We did our annual... Twice a year, we do liquor checks. All package stores, all restaurants completely pass, so we're very glad. Our tough stance on alcohol minors is still continuing to be successful, and I'm glad everyone is following, make sure we protect young people from getting alcohol. Last thing I'd talk about, just for a brief second if I could. You know, about two weeks ago, my father-in-law, Bob Oprey, or most people know him as Mr. Bo, passed away. And the outpouring from everyone is greatly appreciated by the family, but it made me think about this community. And, I mean, let's be honest, everyone seems to know who the mayor is, the trustees are, and the stuff we do for this community and all that, but, you know, reading about Mr. Bo and what he's done in the past, you don't realize how much work people have done in this community over the years to make what it is today. I didn't know a lot of this stuff until we're putting everything together. Him, Uncle Jack, Jack Walsh, and...
Grazis.
Grazis, but I'm thinking of Chernick, and all the guys helped put together the Park District. They were like one of the founding people that put together, eventually formed. They were on the original committee to try to design and build a park district here in Elk Grove Village. Oh, yeah, Chernick was a big part of that. Yes, and they were the ones that helped get the formula. I think you had to go referendum or vote, and a park district is formed here in Elk Grove. And I saw information on that. These were some of the people that do that. Now, today, we just... We have a park. They don't realize the work that people did years ago to help make that happen. And talk about like with Razdis and stuff, they were the ones... Schumachers, Uncle Jack, Mr. Bo and stuff, they helped start the peeny parade through the J.C.'s years ago. And the Schumachers sent a nice little letter to the family, condolence, because they couldn't come to the wake and all that, and they talked about how they actually ran the peeny parade out of the Schumacher's garage. Yep, when they first started organizing that, and they said, remember the days with that? And they were saying how nice Mr. Bo was, that when they moved Elk Grove, he introduced him to the J.C.'s. He's the one that went over as a J.C., introduced her, and then they talked about the peeny parade, how they ran it out of the Schumacher's garage. And now, well, the one son's a police officer here. She's still on the school District 59 board. But you look back, you don't realize the work that all these people did. You know, you hear about maybe the mayors, you might hear about, you know, the trustees, but you don't hear all the work that other people did that we take for granted today here in the village to have stuff like that. You know, believe it or not, we had one sporting goods store at one time in Elk Grove. The only one we ever had was Mr. Bo's.
Exactly.
Mr. Bo, Uncle Jack, and Grandpa Ryan had the only sporting goods store Elk Grove ever had over at the old shopping center. And you look at the stuff, you put together things, you think, wow, these are the people that really made the foundation for all of us to enjoy. And, you know, you forget that sometimes. You don't even know it. And you look at that, and you go, God, what would this village been? And they're not alone. Mr. Bo did a lot, but a lot of people did a lot of things. And you look back, you go, what would this village been if you didn't have people willing back then with kids? And remember, a lot of women didn't work back then, so they had to keep their job going. A lot of men had second jobs, part-time jobs for income, and volunteered to the village to make things different, and you realize, wow.
Look at how the Elk Grove Library started, in one of the...
House on Forest.
The return was the bathtub in the bathroom.
Yeah, we used to walk down on Briarwood. I lived there. My mom would take us in the wagon down there. Same model. Huh? She still does now. But no, you're right. I mean, but, no, I think back like with Darlene Greaves.
Yep.
What she started with stuff.
And the newcomers. I mean, there were so many organizations that they...
And these people did that, and, you know, it just... When you're sitting there putting all that together for the obituary and stuff like that, you realize, go, wow, what these did. And I say, you know, I always knew Mr. Bo, but I never really put it all together, you know, and he's not alone. But you think, wow, these people really made this town what it is today. We actually are lucky. We ride on their wave that they created, and it makes you feel good.
And we're lucky that we have people in the community now who are stepping up and volunteering.
The Care to Coalition Group.
And all our board members, our committees and everything. There's still a lot of volunteerism going on.
But, you know, like we always say, the hard part sometimes is getting the young people involved.
Yeah.
And that's when I look back, and I saw like what age Mr. Bo was back then. He was only just late twenties, but he volunteered. You know, that's what we gotta keep doing. We gotta keep getting people involved to keep the village going for our grandkids and beyond, so...
I agree.
But, yeah, I just thought it really brought back, and made me think, we sometimes take it for granted, and we shouldn't. We should realize what people have done. So as we celebrate our 60th anniversary, we should remember the people that made this village what it is 60 years ago when it first started.
Well, maybe we could each month at a board meeting talk about one memory or something.
We should think about that. Like I say, it just made me think of it during that time, and I wanted to say something.
Well, we used to have historians. We had Mary McCarthy.
Yeah.
You know, we had... Township.
Nancy Van Wheel.
Nancy Van Wheel. Sorry, I was blanking.
Still have Nancy Van Wheel.
You still do, who documented our history.
Oh, yeah.
But a lot of people unaware of that.
That's right.
Who will carry that on. I mean, when I went to the Historical Society and said, how can you help us celebrate our 60th? There's a lot of stuff that hasn't been documented that they were surprised to be getting information on.
And we need to...
And we could lose it.
We gotta preserve it. You're right. You lose it before, you know, the time comes up.
Yeah.
Okay, we move on now to the county's payable warrant for January 26, 2016.
I move that we pay bills, and a county's payable warrant for January 26, the amount of $238,417.91.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Petri, second by trustee Zarnik. Judy, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Trustee Listener.
Aye.
Trustee Petri.
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow.
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik.
Aye.
Trustee Factor.
Yes.
Motion passes six to nothing. Tonight, we have consented agenda items. A, Mr. Payne, A as in what?
Appropriate.
Appropriate, very good. Through G, as in?
Great.
Okay, appropriate. I thought you were gonna say George.
George.
I wouldn't mix great and George together, so that's fine. We'll just keep great by itself. That's fine. So we have items A through G, so I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Real motion by trustee Zarnik, and second by trustee Listener. Any comments, questions, concerns, or changes from board members or staff under the consent agenda? Anybody in the audience tonight? Mr. Petzold, anything?
No, sir.
Sounds good. And without objection, record the votes as free to demonstrate, six to nothing. Move on. There's no items under regular general. Capital Improvements Committee, trustee Petri.
Yes, before we get off the consent agenda, I'd like to just point out that item G, we eliminated the pet licenses. So people no longer have to have a pet license with Elk Grove. We have the... Between the chips and the things that we've done in the past, we didn't feel it was needed, so that's gone.
But we still want people to get their dogs vaccinated.
Vaccinated, and that they have to do, right.
Right.
And for Capital Improvements Committee, I just mentioned that item 6F was the street program that we talked about last meeting, and that's been approved, and we'll be looking forward to some improved streets once the snow is gone, which I hope we've seen the last of it, except for what's gonna melt out there this weekend. That's all I have.
We should be okay, Mr. Romo, right? What year is this?
Oh, yeah. We're not talking about that.
Okay, Judiciary Planning and Zoning Committee, trustee Listener.
No report.
Personnel Committee, the one and only trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
Thank you. It's that time of year where we're starting to take applications for the summer seasonal positions. That'll make us feel better about this winter. But we hire part-time college students for the summer, about 10 weeks' worth of work. What you need to do is have a high school graduation. You need to be able to work outdoors in all-weather conditions, have a verified Illinois driver's license, and a safe-driving record. We prefer an Elk Grove resident. They'll have priority. And the current rate is, I know you love this, Mayor, 11.51 an hour. Don't ask me. I think it's just the way it breaks down as a salary, pretty much, so...
And sometimes we have a hard time getting enough people.
I know.
That's what's amazing.
But, you know, it's... We take the returning workers first, but if you have a whole group that go at one time and have been around for a while, you have it. So it can fill up fast, so go to our website and look under... Well, elkrove.org, and then go to job applications. Fill it out and get it in, 'cause the sooner you do it, we start going through it, because, again, it could be filled up in a month, or we might be looking, but it's not bad earning 10 weeks' worth of 11.51 an hour.
And having your weekends off.
Well, yeah, it's like a... It's an eight-hour-a-day job, and it's not real hard, but you work, and it's great to put that money away, you know, and spend it during the year, so I'll announce it as long as we don't have it filled up, so...
11.51 an hour is more than we make.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Recycling and Waste Committee, trustee Factor.
Thank you. Christmas trees. Wanna clarify something to make sure that everybody understands the policy about Christmas trees. After Christmas is over with, we designate the first two weeks in January as a time that people, if they discard their Christmas trees properly at that time, and without tinsel on them, and without plastic bags around them, then they will be picked up and they will be recycled by Waste Management. If someone puts out a Christmas tree after that time, they still will be picked up by Waste Management with or without tinsel, and they will be thrown into the dump. They won't be recycled any longer. And we checked because of an issue that trustee Prochnow brought up.
My issue?
Whether or not it would be possible to extend it a week, picking them up for... to be recycled. And we checked Waste Management, and it would be far too expensive to try to do that for the number of people that this might pertain to, so that concludes my report.
And I would just like to add that I'm appreciative that they do pick up the tree. They did pick up my tree last week. I was under the understanding it would be recycled. I didn't know it wouldn't be, so I took off all 1,000 strands of the icicles, okay?
I'm proud of you.
And I've got it. I think I got it right for next year.
You're gonna get a recycling award for that.
She probably saved them to use next year.
I did not save them. I did not save them.
Tinsel?
Recyclable, isn't it? Tin? Yeah.
No, it isn't.
What is it?
Oh, it's plastic?
Yeah.
It's plastic.
They're plastic.
Tinsel's not made out of metal anymore.
I think we recycle, right?
I don't think anybody uses tinsel anymore, to tell you the truth.
And I have several... I have several boxes, so this will... This will continue this tradition.
That's what we're throwing at the parade this year, huh?
One at a time.
That's a good one, trustee Frankie.
One at a time, just like they went on the tree.
Okay, thank you, trustee Factor. Mr. Payne and I thoroughly enjoyed his very thorough and very complete report. Information Committee, trustee Prochnow?
No report.
Cable Television Committee, that dynamic duo, trustee Listener and Petri?
You got anything? No report.
Business Leaders Forum, that duo is back again, trustee Listener and Petri?
Uh, no report.
The Youth Committee, trustee Frankie?
The scholarship applications are online now. You can go to Elk Grove website and look under it and download our application. Uh, also, they're at the high schools now, so they're at St. Viter, Conant, and Elk Grove. You have until May 6th to get the application in. Please don't wait till last minute. There's three $1,000 scholarships, but, uh... We'd like to get everything rolling right at the end, so, um... Please don't hesitate, and all the information on there, we'll read it all, so make sure, because if you, uh... Are going to college and you can't figure out how to fill out the application, then we're not going to give you the money. So, I guess basically that's it, so... That's all I have.
Thank you. And this beautiful, warm, summer-like night, Parade Committee, trustee Zarnik?
Thank you. The 60th Birthday Parade is Saturday, June 18th, 5:00 PM. We're celebrating yesterday, today, and tomorrow. We're still looking for couples currently living in Elk Grove who were married in 1956 so that, uh... They'd like to celebrate with us to ride in the parade as grand marshals. Please contact us if you qualify and would like to be part of the event. The next parade meeting is Monday, February 1st, 5:30 PM. And that concludes my report.
Health and Community Services, trustee Zarnik?
Thank you. The Caring Place is a great socialization program for adults. It's organized and supervised by trained and caring staff. The program is available for Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 9:30 to 3:30 PM at Christus Victor Church. There's room for more. It's a wonderful help for caregivers to get respite, and know their loved ones are having a good time. If you're interested, call 847-890-5334. If you need more information, there'll be a booth at this Saturday's Character Coalition Gathering at the Pavilion, and that's from 5:30 till 7:30. Hope to see you there. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Zarnik, Liquor Commissioner, I discussed the final results from our recent liquor check. Uh, Special Events Committee, again, our next one's Memorial Day. Still looking forward to that.
Yes, it is. Rain or shine.
Inside, should be good. Um... Boy, they goofed up my pages here.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm not the only one, right?
Yeah, double.
Okay. Midsummer Concert Classic Series, as we talked about before, our first one will be the Fourth of July, the Lions Club Fourth of July, uh... And Lioners.
Thank you.
Concert, which will be Peter Sotera from Chicago. Um, that'll be followed by Fireworks Spectacular, and that'll be held over at the park by the high school, Park LGK. Uh, July 12th will be our first one out at the Town Center on that Tuesday night. There'll be LeAnn Rimes. July 17th, our actual birthday, will be over at the park again, LGK, with, um... Forner and the Fireworks Spectacular, and then we finish up our last concert out here on July 26th, and that will be Michael McDonald, formerly of Doobie Brothers. Ooh, Mr. Payne had not heard that lineup. He's impressed, huh?
Very nice.
Oh, what's your favorite?
Michael McDonald.
He might see you there, though.
Interesting. I guess he'll make sure George isn't here that night. Well, he's not here anyways after tonight, so no problem. Uh, but, yeah, we have a great lineup coming up, and we're excited about that. Uh, Airport Update, we talked briefly about that earlier. Mr. Romo, Plan Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals?
Mayor and Board of Trustees, there are no items under either the Plan Commission or the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay. What we've waited for, for, actually, for at least an hour, we've been here now, we've, um... I know Mr. Payne say he more than happy to donate his time tonight just for this next report.
No, right.
So, we're always getting ready. We won't sit there.
Thank you, Bill.
We're just prepared to listen with deep, deep, thorough understanding, and that, of course, is a report from the village manager.
No pressure, and, uh... I really don't know what more I could say other than... Well, I don't know what more I could say. No report this evening.
Well said.
Okay, that was, yeah, I would have to say, that was... That was probably one of the finest I've heard.
I think so, yeah.
Thumbs up on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Payne, for coming tonight for that.
So, Ms. Trump, you may go ahead and issue, uh... Mr. almost checked this week. That's fine. That was a good report. Report from the village clerk, the good news she's going to report again is?
Yes, um... Just that early voting will be taking place here at Village Hall for the presidential primary from February 29th through March 14th, Monday through Saturday, uh... 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Looking forward to that. Uh, there's no items on unfinished business, including under the attorney.
No.
Any new business from any board members tonight? Well, we have a full house here tonight, um... So, wow, we know how to pack them in.
Well, you let them go early, that's the problem.
Yeah, I guess. Mr. Petzel, how's it going?
The mayor and the attorney, uh... They called their chair for full attention when trustee Factor was giving his report.
Yes, that is the recycling report. We wait with bated breath every two weeks for it, and once again, Mr. Factor did not let us down. Wouldn't you agree, Mr. Payne?
I agree. It was... It was very eloquent.
Highlight of the night, would you say?
It was... It was well up there.
Yeah, so...
Thank you.
We were very happy, and I'll tell you, he did a beautiful... First off, how do you think he did, filling in for the former village attorney, Mr. Nigabaka? How did I... I thought, didn't he miss a beat, did he, Mr. Petzel?
It's nice to give attorney Payne, a young attorney, some work.
See? Look at that.
Whoa, that was good.
Thank you.
Wait till my grandson knows up here, he wasn't young, but anyways, uh... Mr. Payne, on behalf of the village, the entire village, all 33,538 of us, we appreciate your work tonight. It was very refreshing to have such fine counsel working on our behalf. We're not used to it, so it took us a while to really embrace it, but now we know what a good counsel is, and it's something we may have to revisit again, so, um... We want to thank you very much for that. Matter of fact, I saw the finance director giving thumbs up over there with that comment